Tuesday, October 10th, 2019, Royal Omeo, Town of Easton. Planning and zoning board. As always, we are going out on ECAT tonight, maybe live and recorded. And we'll jump right in. It's inside, a little slow today. First thing I want to give a sign review, 690 Depot Street, Walgreens. All right. Step on up. I have a prior self for the record, please.
Sure, how are you? My name is Heather Dedco, I work with National Sign.
Welcome.
Thank you, I haven't been here for a few months. So as you may know, Walgreens has bought out the Rite Aid chain. And they'd like to replace the wall sign. A hundred square foot, it's a red LED channel letter set. It's like a cloud sign, more of like a cloud, but they look like channel letters. And then reface two panels in the two existing ground signs.
What's so educating, what's a cloud, what do you mean when you say cloud sign?
A what? It's like a cloud, it's like they're connected, the letters are connected, but they almost look like an individual channel letter, but it's actually, it's actually one unit.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a hundred square foot. A little big.
Stephanie, anything?
Uh, no, it looks like it complies, this is the tower sign. Yep. You can see.
Board members, any questions?
Looks fine.
No questions?
Looks good.
Too bad they didn't want to go back and cross the street.
We should approve the sign.
Second. There are seconds, any more to further discussion? There are none? All those in there? Motion passed?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, thanks for coming in.
You're welcome.
See you next time.
Absolutely. All right, continued public hearing, 58 Mill Street. End of subdivision plan Owl Ridge State. And we'll run it concurrently with the continued public hearing. For a special permit for a state lot at 5 Owl Ridge Road.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Frank Ryblin, Ryblin and Sivers. Here representing Mr. Gregory Mills for the Owl Ridge subdivision. I believe our other consultant, Dr. Wang, should be here shortly. He's gonna be addressing most of the drainage issues. Other points, other than the drainage and conservation, I'll be more than happy to go into. But those, those issues, I will have to pass on to him.
Well, we better talk slow, I guess, huh?
Um, so. We have submitted revised plans. Most of the revisions centered around some of the concerns that conservation had. But it did go into great detail with additional details pertaining to the drainage blowups of the drainage sheets. And that, that sort of thing. I don't know if the board has had a opportunity to, to review the additional plans or not, but they are quite extensive at this time.
And what's the date, is it the latest one that was uploaded?
The latest ones were uploaded, uh, revised through.
Was it 9.3 on the upload?
9/23.
Yes, yes, September 23rd, correct.
All right, Stephanie, do you want to go over your comments?
Yeah, um, one of the things that the board asked at the last meeting was to have the Natural Heritage Required No Touch Area for Lot 3 shown on the plans. That was in response to the question of the board raised about why the subdivision is proposing a state lot? When, you know, this is a conventional subdivision. And I believe Mr. Ryblin was the one who responded that the road was designed such to provide as much of the no-touch that was being required by Natural Heritage. So, I, I did not see that.
Again, that, that is one of the reports that Dr. Wang will be going over. He has extensive correspondence and documentations that he has received from Natural Heritage that he will be sharing with, with the board to document that.
So I guess the question I would have is, I suspected that at this time, that area has not been fully agreed on yet? Is, is the no-touch area defined as yet? Or are you still working on that with Natural Heritage?
They, once all the plans are finally approved, they will have a last review of it, but it's basically 99% approved. They have given us the limits that we must work within. But again, they do want to see everything once, once the board has approved it.
So I, I didn't miss it on the plans, that area has not been shown on the revised plans?
Well, we've shown our limit of work on the plans. And that the limit of work is the length that the Natural Heritage has allowed us to go out to. Also, there is shown on the plans an area that will be restoring. Uh, and when I say restoring, this is not a wetland area, it is an upland area. Get very near the back of the restoration. And, next to the last sheet, maybe? Yeah. Can we keep the view on both? Okay, this area.
So wait, I'm sorry, Frank, what sheet number is that?
This is sheet 2223, next to the last sheet. This area is to be revegetated. It is an upland area now. If Dr. Wang has designed the proposed planting, this was all been approved by Natural Heritage. And that is the entire purpose of this area, is restoration for Natural Heritage. To orient yourself, the existing dwelling that is on the property now, I believe most of the board saw that dwelling when you, when you walked out there very recently, it situated right over here. This is right down from that existing dwelling. If you'll recall, right behind that dwelling, there was a substantial drop-off, four feet or so down into a flat, open area grass field. And it's that grass field that they want revegetated with trees and other plantings.
Okay. Then, again, the floodplain that's shown on the plans is not consistent with the FEMA firm maps. The applicant indicated that they are planning to submit documentation to FEMA in support of the line that they've shown and seek a letter of map amendment. Woodard and Curran, at this point, in conjunction with their stormwater management review, has asked for the assessment, the evaluation, the calculations that the applicant undertook to support the map change so that they can determine the limits of the floodplain and ensure that the line's accurate and that adequate compensatory flood storage is being provided. And the applicant has not provided that information at this point.
The, the reason we have not come forth with that for Woodward and Curran's review is that the final definitive authority on that is FEMA. FEMA will be reviewing it with their professionals, they will make the final determination. And by zoning code and other regulations, we are held to the FEMA determination as to the extent of the floodplain. We felt it would be unnecessary for the applicant to have to pay for another professional review of it that really does not have the weight that FEMA's has. FEMA's determination will have to be definitive and we will have to abide by that.
Yeah, I, I think the concern, I think what the applicant is seeking is that the board would approve this subdivision plan with the contingency that FEMA approve the map amendment. If the, if, if there's any variance or FEMA disagrees with the line, then the applicant would need to come back. It's also important to understand where that line is because the definition of a lot, of course, is an uninterrupted contiguous tract of land excluding any streams, ponds, wetlands, and floodplains. So you have, what you have shown on the plan is that there, in a couple instances, you have just over 40,000 square feet. I think it's 42,000 on one lot and 43 on another lot. And any changes in that could render those configurations non-compliant.
What's the lead time on this process with FEMA?
The last, I was just, just telling my client a few minutes ago, the last application that I saw go into FEMA, FEMA responded back with their typical forms they had received it stating that they were, should make a decision within 30 to 60 days. Now, that was a relatively small, straightforward one, this one may take slightly longer, I'm not sure. Because this is far more complex than the one that I was referring to.
And has that process begun yet? Like the filing or submission to FEMA for the revised?
That is a question that Dr. Wang will have to answer.
Okay.
Right, because it's almost, you could argue that FEMA is the ultimate judging body, but at the same time, this is part, it is part of the process and it's integral to the process. So a simple question such as, you know, where are you in the, where are you with FEMA? That's, that's, that's a pretty basic question.
Yes, it is.
It's not, you know, paying, you know, asking you to pay a separate company to review the information, right? Okay.
Certainly. And we, and we do understand that, that nothing definitive can come about as far as moving ahead with the project until FEMA has rendered a final determination.
And then I just wanted to note that the environmental planner did provide comments that the Conservation Commission has requested a review of alternatives to the proposed plan. So again, as well as the location and extent of the floodplain be confirmed. And if there are any changes to that, the board has approved a plan, it would need to come back for modifications.
It is our intention to not request closure of the public hearing until we are well on our way and understand that the, the plan would be approved by Conservation as well. I would not wish for this board to approve a plan, be ready to sign it, and then Conservation say, no, you gotta move something over here and we have to come back and ask for, for changes to it. So I, I would not want to see it closed until they are ready to approve.
But I have a question, I joined late this. On the original letter that they sent, there are five waivers. We are all behind those five waivers that they requested?
That's another good point, that if, if and when the board is ready to take a vote, if the vote is to approve each of those waivers, needs to be addressed individually and included in the motion.
So Stephanie, to your, to your last point, because I didn't understand it when I read your report over the weekend. The environmental planner provided additional comments indicating that the Conservation Commission has requested a review of alternatives to the proposed layout. What does that mean? Are you talking lot layout?
Yes, yes.
And so, has requested a review of alternatives? So if you could explain that in detail, I'd appreciate it.
They've asked that the applicant go back and consider alternatives to the proposed layout that would have less impact on the resource area and the habitat area.
Without, without any guidance for what this alternative should be doing or not?
I, I didn't go into details here, I believe that they, they're, they have a wetland consultant and a wetland
I guess that, that concerns me. I mean, the planning board is the one that handles lot layout. And this seems to be a kind of a convoluted process. Where it sounds like we're looking to get this thing almost to the end, but there's so many things up in the air. And now Concom wants to check in and see proposed layouts. So I guess I, I.
Well, the conservation.
Let me finish, please, it strikes me that this is really, the process is really breaking down here. And we've talked before ad infinitum about doing joint hearings. And maybe this would have been one, because I'm not a big fan of the Conservation Commission without involvement of the planning board, who is also the zoning board, getting involved in lot layouts. And it seems to, we seem to be awful far up the road to now be questioning a lot layout. And this is the first time I can recall that ever happening.
Well, the Conservation Commission, it's within their jurisdiction to ask for alternatives that would be less impactful to the resource areas and that.
Have they given any guidance on what impact areas they're talking about?
Yes.
And is that gonna be shared with this board so that we can understand what they're asking for? To see if we're okay with it?
More than happy to share it with this board, I don't think this board.
Can we do that tonight? Are you prepared to do that tonight or not?
No, I don't have that information available. And it's not for the planning board to overtake the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission.
Nor the Conservation to overtake the jurisdiction of the planning board.
Greg, if I may finish?
Go ahead.
The Conservation Commission asked for alternatives with the initial opening of the, it's my understanding of the, of the application.
But, so why isn't that handled before at this point, is my, is my question? We have lots of meetings between staff and this, and this board.
I, I, the applicant.
It just doesn't seem to be a very efficient process to be doing it this way. Because it doesn't seem like there's anything we're really gonna be able to. We're, we're talking about a project that may change substantially because of the, because of Concom, but we have no idea what they're looking for and why. So that's just the source of my frustration.
So Stephanie, your question, because I, I see a contradiction in between the two positions. You think that they need to work on more on this issue and provide maybe alternatives according to the guidance? While he's saying they don't want to burden the customer with more cost doing that, so there is.
No, I, I'm sorry.
I, I don't understand that.
My, my position is to represent the planning board and guide the planning board. The Conservation Commission, within their jurisdiction, and this was raised in earlier meetings with the applicant. And they were asked to look at alternatives. And I think the, so all I'm doing is indicating that there may be a change in the project as a result of alternatives.
We should have called the Conservation to come to this meeting.
Right, right. The alternative, the alternative analysis that we request are contained within this set of plans that you have before you now. There's a couple of alternatives.
Why don't you walk us through that, then, please?
That are contained in there. And we, we've shown that what we have proposed.
I'd like to go through that right now, then.
Perhaps you, perhaps you're butter qual about. This is Dr. DeShang Wang.
Good evening, I'm a new associate from Creative Land and Water and Earth. Thank you very much for seeing you all. So we did provide, originally, when we submit to the Conservation, we did provide an alternative analysis. And then upon the review of the Conservation's peer reviewer, and we revised our alternative analysis to including three alternatives in our analysis and submitted for the Conservation Review. So I'd like to probably, so this is, see if I probably raise up a little bit so to put in context of sensitivity of this sign.
Please, please use a microphone after you set that up.
Yes, I will explain that why and that so. So that's okay, right? So this is the aerial photo. And with the layout.
You're gonna have to grab a microphone, sir, please, it's for the television that's on.
You, you can use the microphone to point.
Yes, uh, can you hear better? Okay, thank you. So if you're looking, this colored plan to show this site, why we say it's relative sensitive, it's taking more complications. So we do have overlaying with endangered species habitat. And we understand that. So we have a stream coming down, so from, through the site. And so which have a 100-year floodplain overlay with the site. So these two adding together, so it's making a little bit sensitive. And so we take a very extraordinary step to tackle this thing. Before even we laid out anything, we went to the Fishery and Wildlife. So we presented them the condition and they have multiple meetings, so, because we took here. So, and so after around, if you're looking at, we originally have a seven-house lot. And so through all that process, that was reduced to six-house lot. So that's a, just by, from your perspective, that's a significant alternative analysis. So this stream coming off Mill Street into our property, if you go look at it. So we had filed an N-RAD, which is basically a resource designation. So was found that that's an intermittent stream first and second. You can tell because the first about 67, probably up to 100 feet, it's, you can see the channel is already defined with the two 18-inch covert coming across, across Mill Street to our site. And there's no record, but you can sail by common sense, you can see that was probably put in by the, either the developer of that street or by town to alleviate some flooding. So to either upstream or neighborhood. So due to that, you can see that the floodplain was coming across in the middle of us. So we have a plan, so I probably can put it in later on, but, so just to make it simple, easy. So the, the floodplain was originally coming down puberty, that direction, and crossing our land, which was not in line with it. So that things need to be revised because was not in line with the FEMA's current floodplan. So we are in the process, we already conducted computer monitoring and already calculated the accurate floodplan using the field survey data. So that's done. So, and then from the review, so we could, because of that stream, as I said, it's maned docked. Basically to install that two 18-inch covert. So we feel was pretty ordered, so we can use naked fill and just to creating this new road. And we also have a limitation, go out to the Mill Street, have a side distance to be safe. So we cannot use that existing driveway, which is relatively narrow. And so we have to, we kept this minimal radius of turning for public safety and side distance. So that's, and, and so we are going to actually, due to the shift, right now, the whole covert is all, it's 100, 640-some feet. So it's very long, narrow, like a small diameter pipe. So the longer the pipe, the smaller the diameter, so the less, the more impact to the wildlife. So the wild, Fishery and Wildlife people look at the situation. So we propose to cut this short by shifting the roadway. We get an opportunity to open about 45 feet of the old covert to make it open. And so we integrated with our stormwater. And then we under over roadway rather than 18-inch pipe, we replaced with a 36-inch pipe, which even though sounds like it's only doubled the size, but you know that to the R square, it's actually, so doubled, not just the simple replacement. It's actually doubled the flow area because we combined two pipes into one, making the passing of wildlife much easier. So that's all was incorporated and discussed in our alternative analysis and had a full discussion in the process of Fishery and Wildlife review. And they are in favor of this plan, so that's why we call this as a final impact. And this impact plan, why we are doing it, it was last for a year because the original Fishery and Wildlife map showed the Bonapour was like a thousand feet away. But we went to the field and tracking there, they exercised to the maximum extent. They extended, basically say, I want to call the whole wetland in your, up to your land as Bonapour. Okay, you cannot be conservative than that. So that's why from this corner, originally the Bonapour, actually the pool is way outside. But because of the wetland, they made it the, the boundary of the thousand feet, 500 feet and thousand foot of buffer zone enclosed to our land. So, so, but that's agreement. So they say, okay, but you can see also, we did a very detailed land use breaking down. So this brown area was existing house and deemed not suitable for the, for the habitat. And then the purple one was semi, like a compromised, deteriorated. And then the, the green area is existing forest. And then the brown area was considered as segmented, segmented habitat. So based on all that value, so we meet with them in Fishery and Wildlife office, you know, back and forth several times, we're coming up an agreement. So the rest of, you can see the property line, so the whole property, if you're looking at here, right now, it's only limit to see the green area was ordered. You can see it's very small portion of compared with how much we reserved. And on top of it, so the, the whole land is going to be deeded to the town as so a Conservation restriction, Conservation Land perpetually. And there was in the process, we also find a big area around here on the side. So was kind of landlocked because the deed is not clear, but originally probably likely is, is the spread off from our land. But that land will be fully protected and then nobody claims lands right now. So even though we believe, so to some point is part of it because you can see there's a car pass and also stone bridges connect the two parts of together. But that's just our fighting. And on top of it, we're still going to contribute to, to the Fishery and Wildlife Conservation Fund for like in a value of 2.45 acres of Conservation Land because they don't let us using this, they called, they called because of our roadway segmented this area. So therefore, they say, well, you get to contribute. So all that is agreed and that they issued a letter of understanding to approve of this final layout to proceed. And so in, we carry that approved from Fishery and Wildlife because that's a core part and so, and we come in to Conservation. In that process, even though we think when we were using a sloped slope edge and they say, well, using retaining wall, so we accommodated that and we provided more than 2.2% times of wetland application. So, so from that alternative, you can see from environmental, environmental impact perspective, we are significantly actually improving the existing condition to providing better path and shorten the, the smaller covert. So the flood will be, definitely due to this project, will, the flooding condition will greatly improve. We're providing three, one is small, it's just take care of the small entrance area to go into a basin one, and we have a basin two and basin three. So we have a three detention basins of such a small subdivision. So to, to, to accommodate the stormwater, to improve the stormwater management and the flood control purpose. So we provided way more flood storage compared with the existing. So, so we, we are, that, that flood storage. So that's all detailed and submitted to the Conservation. But just for your reference, so we, we did address the stormwater management question. So, so raised the basin bottom a little bit. So, but it's, everything is minor from the, from the stormwater management perspective. So we added oil grid separator, but it's very, if you want to know the details, it's much better, easy to maintain. Rather than the storm scepter, they only have a six-inch, like a vacuum access. So we actually made into two manhole type of, like a bay saver type of design, which have a bypass, so that the flow goes to the. have a bypass, so that the flow goes to the treatment. And then the bigger clean water, we can bypass it, but have a twenty four inch full access manhole. So one for we have two systems just for some small areas, two oil grid separator so to to treat the the stormwater. So I think that's that's a summary of our alternative analysis. So the three, the first one is, as I said, is existing condition. They have, we technically this area, if you're looking, if you're including the ones semi disturbed area, it's almost equal to the proposed condition. So and then you have the access of the the covert is is much longer, so there's no, it's considered total interruption of the migration because it's so long that the creatures doesn't really want to go through that. So that's that's alternative I I'm trying to give you a summary on so which is presented to the conservation for review.
So I'm confused, why does this plan show seven buildable lots?
Well, because that's what's original lot, if you're looking, this the lot number one is basically for for stormwater park right now.
Right, but this one shows seven structures.
Yeah, this was.
If I may, so my question is, I read a report from our planner who says that conservation has requested a review of alternatives. I asked to be walked through the alternatives. I have a six lot proposed subdivision in front of us. You just walked me through a plan with seven. So my question is, if anybody can answer this, I'd appreciate it. Is conservation looking for an alternative to the six lot subdivision? That is presented in the plans dated September twenty third?
It is my understanding that conservation is not looking for an alternative as far as number of lots. They are looking for alternatives as far as disturbance of the environment, wetland issues, that sort of thing. And included in these September twenty third set of plans, the twenty three sheet set of plans, there's a couple of alternative analysis shown in there with different grading schemes.
Okay, so that's what I'd like to. That's what I'd like to know right now and and understand the status of this. So if you could walk me through those two sheets. I'd appreciate it. What and what sheet numbers are they? So I can get our wonderful computers to maybe unload it to me in two minutes. Let's get through this first and I'll give it to you. I wanted to stay on my point. Try to just do here.
Alternative one is existing. So actually three sheet, but the one is just basically the existing condition. It's the existing condition.
Okay.
Yeah, alternative one.
So which which plan sheet is that, please?
The sheet ten of twenty three is alternative one is basically the status quo, just as it is, existing condition. So.
But that doesn't show an alternative.
Alternative from that way is.
Baseline.
Right, baseline is existing condition, so land use disturbance and restrictions.
All right, so just so if I can just to try to speak this up. So you don't have a plan that shows or do you have a plan that shows an alternative layout?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I want to look at.
This is alternative.
I understand the baseline, I want to see the alternative. So that's sheet eleven?
Sheet eleven is alternative two. So this was the previously submitted plan. So for the first review by the conservation and the water current and LEC. So the so if you're looking, the only difference basically, we because it's a small subdivision, we don't have the grid separator, just the two catch basins and going to the small detention basin. And then for this one also have that's a pipe and a catch basin going to there. And so around this north northwest slope of the new roadway was a field slope. So it was like a two to one, two to one slope probably. And so they say, well, can you reduce more? So and see for the stormwater quality, see if we can treat especially going to the roadway so at the entrance. So for to incorporate that, we coming up.
So can I, can I just jump in for a second? So but see, I guess I'm reacting to a comment I see from our planner. So I'm just trying to, it talks about review of alternatives to the proposed layout. Now I understand what you seem to be describing are construction details, but am I, is the plan, and forgive me, I just can't get this thing to work quick enough, the layout of the lots and the layout of the buildings shown on sheet eleven, is that the same as the layout showing?
That did not change.
Okay, so so is there, so is Concom looking for a proposed, still looking for proposed alternatives to to this layout, the nine twenty three plans? Do we know that?
I believe they are.
Okay. Are you aware of that?
We have, we have not prepared alternative lot late lot and home location layouts. We have prepared and submitted to conservation alternative grading layouts with the drainage and retaining walls. But no, we've only only utilized the one six lot layout plan.
Because I guess it's delicate balance here and we're trying to make the best use of everyone's time and not to waste the applicant's time and not to waste the board's time. And it just seems, this is being twenty three sheets for six houses, this is a pretty involved set of plans, which I can appreciate. But if the, I guess if the, and so I understand that, okay, maybe the FEMA line is gonna be up in the air. Okay, but if the layout's gonna change, I guess I would like to see that, and to Stephanie's point, I understand that that's the purview of of Concom, but I would like to have seen that worked out before we get to this point because this seems useless almost to go. We're going through a set of plans that may be changing substantially.
I do not anticipate any changes to the location of the lot lines.
Well, but so but you have to say, I'm reading a report from our director of planning, who's obviously more involved in this than than we are, and it seems like that's not the case. So I, you know, I just don't, it's frustrating because I don't understand how we're we're really looking to deliberate on something that is still subject to substantial change. And I would like to have seen that worked out before we got to this point.
Or you've probably, I I would, I think there was one point, the conservation peer review say you maybe get two lots, so we don't even have a two lot frontage. So means you only have one lot that will go back to the existing condition. So that means it's already there, it's a layout. If you don't have more than two house lot, that means existing condition. So we already have that existing condition as a layout per se. So we cannot create a two house lot even. So means you have to create in a subdivision roadway in order to even get two house lots. So that will be coming up to this one. So in order to creating that layout for the for for more than one house lot, so you have to create a subdivision. So because we don't have a frontage for two house lot for for A and R lot.
Right, I I understand that, but I don't think that's the point that's being raised here.
Well, I believe conservation.
So when, again, I'm just, when are we gonna get to a point, when do you think, or Stephanie, this can be for Stephanie, when do we think Concom is gonna be set with a layout that we can actually review and move forward on a a review of? Because I don't want to sit here, I'm not gonna do a approval of a subdivision, subject to a revised FEMA line, subject to, you know, I'm getting tired of the stuff coming to us with subject to revision. I want, it should be figured out by the time I get here and I'm not, I'm not taking that up. I just, it just, you know, we should have a more efficient process than this. And I would really like Concom's shaping of the lots or whatever review, you know, whatever alternatives to the proposed layout means, I'd like to have that done by the time it comes to us for a definitive subdivision review because that sounds more than changing. You know, when we had a site block where the environmental planner was there and all I heard was request of maybe a change of a pipe detail, you know, up at the head of the road.
Again, conservation is concerned with grading, drainage, anything within the buffer zones of the wetland areas, environmentally sensitive areas. However, the conservation commission is not concerned so much with the geographic location of lot lines and and street lines. How how we divide the land up as far as creating imaginary lots is really not within the purview of the conservation commission. The grading and how we handle the drainage and that sort of thing definitely is. So I I don't foresee any changes to the physical location of the lot lines themselves.
Yeah, I agree. I don't really see what I, sorry, never had a problem that say the subdivision layout is subject to the conservation's alternative analysis. I think it's a total impact area. So people can use in this one, just creating one house lot, but so so they can have as much as impact to the environment as.
Okay, and then one more question and then I'll say it. So do you see, going back to Stephanie's second point, the revised floodplain, if FEMA accepts whatever you're proposing, which I haven't formally proposed anything, do you see that causing any of your proposed lots to not conform to our definition of buildable lots?
In in the event, I do not anticipate FEMA requesting any significant changes of the floodplain line. I've been through these reviews with FEMA, with Dr. Wang previously, and he's very confident and his reports and findings usually go through without a problem. However, in the unlikely event, there would be a significant change of the floodplain line other than what we've proposed. Yes, we may have to alter some lot lines. I cannot envision it really altering a roadway layout or anything like that. We may have to shift the lot line a foot or two or an angle just to incorporate the square footage, but I seriously do not anticipate that happening, but it is feasible.
Unless you have to go back to national heritage too, because everything got.
Well, natural heritage wouldn't really become involved unless we had to change our limit of work.
Yes, right.
The lot lines could change, we still shift the upland areas around as long as we didn't shift the limit of work back into their jurisdiction.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, if I just may say something, I think the reason, one of the reasons, of course, Wood and Karin is looking for this information so that they can complete their stormwater management review. I'm gonna refer back to another project that was actually a forty B, so I don't think this board heard it, but the conservation commission did and they had a similar situation with the floodplain, that it was obviously not accurate as shown on the maps. And they did an analysis, I'm not even sure of Mr. Wang, I'm not sure who who did the analysis, the engineer, this was Winterberry.
Yeah, I did. I did the FEMA revision.
And and my recollection of that project was that information was provided upfront to the commission so they could proceed at the same time that the filing was being done with FEMA, with the presumption that by review of the peer reviewer, you know, they could confirm the information and allow the applicant to move forward.
Close to my question. My question is, you say you went back and forth with the conservation. Do you have a summary of your latest agreement with them? What do they say? Do you have minutes of that? Is that existing was not supplied?
Well, minutes you can get on the time. I'm assuming what you're, I mean, I would like to, what you're asking for should be represented here. That's, I don't want to see a minutes, I want to see a plan.
Well, I say what is missing there is some kind of document form about the summary of what they have.
And a response.
Up to now, before they go to FEMA. Up to now, what what is there that is being proposed?
Yes. So so yes, we have submitted in detail of the FEMA floodplan. So what you see the pink shaded here, that's the that's a new floodplan. And we also, let's see. Yeah, this is.
The next sheet goes over to the sheet in the next one, I believe.
Okay, so this is, this is the one we are in the process preparing some paperwork to file with it. So this is going to be revised, this is the original FEMA floodplan. You can see they go through the ridge, the upper slope, you can see this is a valley. So just common sense, the water cannot flow on the slope rather than flowing the valley. That's just locations already wrong, so not mentioning. And you can see they just very simple, making like almost an artificial channel, floodplan, how can you, so the the water will flow wide and narrow depending on geology, the topography, not going to be just assumed like two parallel lines almost. So that's, there's not, that's why I said, there's not a question. We did the winter pair revision, which is much bigger than this revision. So we we are preparing the same computer model which everybody uses. I didn't write that model, I just run it. So everybody runs a HACRES so model. So so that's, that's the one we submitted. So we put on this one, we put on, put on the overlay with the with the area photo so to so to people can see it. So that that's a plan we already submitted upon the request. But we, as we all know, this one have to be finalized by FEMA. That's through that process, there's involve that process independently. So it's not the, it's a jurisdiction to for the political protection perspective, but technical review is FEMA's job. That's why we say, subject to that, that's the winter berry was was carried on in the same manner. I don't remember exactly whether we got full approval from the FEMA before we filed the NOI. So so I I have to go back looking on that, but I I don't recall that was involved in the conservation review. So they just say, taking the to approve the plan and treat it as true. And so we worked on that for flat compensatory storage, that one also involved it. That was based on this one, we provided flat compensatory storage, so.
Is this agreed by the conservation committee?
We submitted, this is not agreed on, so in a way, this one have to be agreed by FEMA.
I know, it is very good. It's disagreed by the conservation commission of eastern for now until FEMA approved, that's the question.
Yeah, that's a subject to that, subject to the FEMA approval.
And everything here has been submitted to the conservation.
Right, the same.
In simultaneously submitted both this board and the conservation commission.
Has the modeling that you went through, Dr. Wang, you said that you used the standard modeling to do this, which I'm imagining you went out, you shot grades and.
Yes.
And did an assessment.
Detailed.
And you fed that information into the model. Has that model been provided with that information to Wood and Karin?
No, because we don't, because we don't want to pay for the one who is not going to be really approved, the flood.
Well, it would be part of their stormwater review.
No, that's not true because they can assume that's a floodplan, but the stormwater, all stormwater management is all located outside of wetlands because and as well as a hundred year floodplan because there's a, there's a no, when every time when you have a FEMA floodplan on the plan, you mark on it, you don't ask in FEMA to give them the model and the data.
And really just the fact that they happen to be involved in FEMA right now.
Right.
Doesn't every, any, that would mean almost any property with with a floodplain line.
You have to give them.
Go back and show us the calculations on that, we want to review those. And that's just not how it goes. It just so happens that they have to deal with FEMA at the same time. But yet.
Well, I think in most cases.
It would be like going to do national heritage, say, we want to redo, we want our consultant to do natural heritage's job too, to make sure that they did a good job with that.
Yeah, that's, that's really not what they're saying. What they're saying is where there's a disagreement and understandably, I I think the point that Dr. Wang makes, it's very obvious that this doesn't go up over this kind of elevated area that the floodplain exists somewhere else. Based on the contours you've shown, it looks like it makes sense that it's there. So it's only when it's in question that you would ask to see the data to confirm it.
We can provide cross section data, that's the survey data, just as much as the, that the surveyor's certification. So actually, Ms. Librarian did the survey, I use the data. So I didn't survey the data, so the topography. So in a way, it actually make it much more independently. So so when he surveyed it, he doesn't know where the floodplan is, he gave to me and I don't know where the, so I know where the cross section is drawn, but I, I mean, I didn't do the survey, so that data was like a certifying, licensed surveyor. So that's the one much, that's, I mean, you cannot go any.
Yeah, I mean, you just think that something as simple as a wetland flag would most likely be accurate ninety nine percent of the time, but we find sometimes.
No, no, yeah, wetlands, this is much more accurate than wetland flag, I can tell you that.
Topographic data, right, yeah. Well, I have closely a couple shots.
Yeah.
I I personally did the the topographic survey through.
What are they, fifty feet or twenty five?
Oh, it will depend upon the topography. If you're in an area where the ground is relatively smooth.
If it's a tight slope, you have to go.
Twenty five feet. If you're in an area of changing topography, in many places, we're getting shots of two or three feet.
Especially with the cross section, we did much more points. Especially with the cross-section, we did much more points, so that's how things was accurately.
Okay, well, I mean, you know, we can only, I guess, suppose Conservation will do what they need to, with what they feel is right with the, you know, with the FEMA line, and that's not really, we can move on, I think we can move on from that.
Yeah, I mean, that's all our logic, so, which was, I don't remember last time we had to submit the computer model to the peer review for the floodplain analysis, and so that's not what they were hired for. If a FEMA comes and spec, say, help, you get to revise something, so we revise it, because that's, they have to, we have to giving them all the detail, they have to scrutinize it, and we don't want to pay for two parties, so, to scrutinize the data.
Now, so, is the National Heritage limit of work the same as the no-touch area? Are those synonymous? Are those different?
We have a 50-foot no alteration zone under the Wetlands Protection Bylaw, and but for the, for the limit of work.
I meant the NH, you know, the National Heritage, no-touch or limit of work area, is that the same?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, and does your letter of understanding have like a plan attached to it that shows the limit of work?
But then.
That's that right there?
Yeah, this is the one.
So, you have a letter of understanding, and that's, that's the plan that was attached to it?
Exactly, and the, and the limit of that was transported by surveyor, putting on that plan for.
And when you had worked with them, you had seven lots on that, but it's still the same, it's still the same.
Exactly, even though we reduced, cut off one lot, and, but the limit of work is still the same.
So, even though the National Heritage process seems kind of like a totally separate process, that we never see anything on, and we can't really get any information on, there is that, that final document shows, but.
That's correct, and we did submit to the Conservation Letter of Understanding from the, we can forward one to you, it's probably on the web anyhow, so, when we submit the NOI application, we submit that letter of understanding, so, because we cannot finalize the final letter approval from the natural heritages, because we do know through the process, we may have some tunings and changes. Doesn't mean, this one is just letter of understanding, if we have to increase a little bit alteration, it's okay, too, but we have to pay more mitigation fee, so, so I'm just letting you know.
I see, yeah, they have, they have a way to.
Exactly, they can get some more funding to protect real habitat, so this is why it's already chewed up, I mean, we all know, I mean, it's not really the pristine habitat around, so.
Yes, I see, okay.
So, when are we going to know if CONCOM's happy with the layout or not? It's not, as I understand, it's not really contingent upon FEMA, or is it?
Unless it is, unless they think it is, but that's out of our control, right, yeah, so.
I'd like them to answer.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
And, I want to know when it makes sense for us to look at this, so we can decide on things like waivers and final layouts, and, and get our final peer review report.
We will be going back to Conservation early part of November, I believe it's November 1st is the date, but their first meeting in November will be appearing before them.
And what about FEMA?
FEMA, we, I, so, I'm finding it, but I'm, I have to go to China for a sun, a little bit time, but all the paperwork is pretty ready, so when I'm, I'm reviewing it, because we need to notify the neighbors, the town, so there's lots of, like, the process need to, the technical one is done, but I need to cover all the legal process, I, so probably have to wait, I come back, so, November. So, probably the first week, second week of November, get the package.
So, would you like us to continue this to the next meeting, and then if you have more, more solid plans?
I believe that if we do not have a little more progress with Conservation by your next meeting, I believe it would be in all of our investment groups to request a continuance.
Right, so, so we can, so keep that option open, but yeah, at the same time, yeah, all right, is that, anyone else that could continue this at this point?
We don't have no more questions.
Yeah, sure.
So, does anybody have any issues with the waivers that are being asked for? Has anybody even reviewed those?
Yeah, I've read them, but they don't say too much to me. The looping is something interesting that you cannot do, because you are so far away, the water looping, the water supply. Then there is some bylaws about what do you do at the end of the cul-de-sac, I don't know how, how important those are.
Right, right. That's been a waiver that's been pretty common.
Yes, I, we have one a month ago, I think, so that one.
Your memory's better than I.
I don't know.
Okay. Chris, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, the waiver's like fine with me.
I have a question to you, if they cut trees, because there is a waiver there for showing trees of more than certain diameter, and there is a sentence there that they are responsible for replanting, planting trees, is that should show on the, on the plants, or is left to them for doing? It's one of the waivers there.
What's the waiver request?
Not, not to show trees over certain size.
Oh, okay. The tree location survey.
Yeah, the tree location show in the back, and they want a waiver for that. I would assume it's okay.
Why are you requesting that waiver, since you brought it up, unless we have a discussion?
We're requesting that waiver for various reasons. One, if you look at the grading plan, you can see that within the layout right of way, and for a significant distance back, because of the grading, it's all going to be changed anyway. So, any trees within that area would, by necessity, to build the subdivision, have to be cut down. Your subdivision regulations do require that we plant shade trees on every lot, anyway, so I feel that the added expense to the developer to have the survey crew going out there physically locating all of the various trees that are going to end up being cut down is just an unnecessary expense.
Yeah, during a site walk, one of the, you know, they're discussing how, I think everything's being filled five feet without, my screen's still pixelated, so, and we're not, we wouldn't allow it, but we're not, I know, I don't believe you've asked for a request for a waiver for planting the trees. Excuse me?
You're going to plant the trees.
Yeah, yeah, we did not request a waiver on the planting.
No, it says a provision of the construction, the applicant must plant new shade trees as required by regulations.
So, that, I mean, that regulation might actually be more sensitive, show us a clear cut area, not, not show us the trees in the area.
Exactly.
When we vote for this, we need to put very clear that, that we want the shade trees.
Well, it's in the plan, yeah.
And those would go in the decision to a mass as conditions.
That's a great point, that they could, if they want to kind of keep this thing moving once it actually gets to that point, you know, they could look at the trees that are there, and think of some real indigenous trees that can maybe, you know, go maybe along the roadway, or in certain spots.
I think the one, if I may, Mr. Chair, I think the waiver for the looped water main, the applicant has indicated there's really no way to do that. I want to make sure that you're communicating with the water supervisor, and have some, the board should probably have something in writing from them as to what is agreed upon.
That was more of my question, how you formalize that.
Yeah, that needs to be prior to a vote of the board, so that the board's not trying to figure that out.
Now, is the land beyond, you know, kind of building out of the 25-foot, 25-foot wide easement at the end, is that land still owner unknown, or is that what you mentioned you actually?
It's still owner unknown.
Okay. And then the land behind that is the town estate?
Correct.
That's what I was talking about with during the wildlife habitat evaluation, if we, people we know, if we have ownership there, we will be perfect in that, we don't need any, pay any fee for mitigation, because, but we know this is not going to be touched, but I say, who owns it, we just.
Well, you know, sometimes, like you mentioned, if there are already power paths, existing power paths, so they go to the town land, and the owner of that land were known, it might make sense to actually have an easement, so that people can access the town land rather than having landlines.
Right. So, yeah, we cannot donate that one, because right now, nobody owns that land, or the town can claim ownership at some point, I don't know.
Someone could claim ownership in the future, right?
We have to prove, fully prove it.
Yeah, oh, I don't know.
I cannot say no one owns it, I can say, we have no idea who owns it, if someone does, we have researched and haven't been able to.
I understand, yes, someone could do that.
After everything we've discussed, I don't think we want to get into business of putting easements to land that's no touch, so, I don't see the purpose of that. So, I think it makes sense for us to reconvene when this stuff's all hashed out with, with CONCOM, because we're, we're close on this stuff, but if there's going to be changes, I don't want to do it twice. And I want a plan in front of me that's pretty much set, I can live with the floodplain, I guess, not another better understanding of that process, but I want to see a nice tight bundle wrapped up with CONCOM, so that this isn't a pretty sensitive site, and I really loathe, I'm loathe to approve plans contingent, I don't think it's a good process. I think we're doing that a bit too much these days, and I want to stop it.
Looks not early than the 23rd of November.
Yeah, you, I, I suggest that you vote to continue to a date certain, otherwise, they would have to re-notify abudders, and in this case, then if they're not ready, they haven't configured everything else out with.
How long can we continue to without having to notify abudders?
As long as you know, continue to a date certain, so that the abudders know what date they're.
And as long as they'll have to request the continuance, because.
Right, and then we, it would be on the agenda, and then that subsequent date would be announced, so if any abudders had shown up, they, they just know.
Right, I'd just rather not do what we've been doing, do it every week, because then that brings people here, that I think even sometimes, we forget in the middle of the week, we start to lay out things, and I don't want to come in and have six continuances every meeting. So, if you guys could, you know, you're more involved in this process, obviously, with CONCOM than we are, what do you think? We're talking two meetings up, three meetings up?
Yeah, sounds reasonable.
Was it two or three?
I believe, so wherever.
The board meets November 13th, and then on the 25th.
It's too early, November 23rd is the after one.
I would request November 9th, then, your meeting of November 9th.
No, the 13th, it's November 13th.
November 13th. If after the Conservation Commission meeting on the 4th, we see that we're not nearing completion with them, then we would request a continuous beyond that.
Yeah, and I would request that pending your outcome with CONCOM at that meeting, I just want to make sure we get the plans in here, you know, usually ahead of time, and, you know, if we have to go in extra, I don't want to, I don't want to go through, I don't want to prove a plan, we don't have the information yet from CONCOM, they haven't put it on yet. I understand fast process, but I want to, you know, I try to move things as quick as I can, but I need a complete plan, so we can throw it on that. No more contingency approvals, it's just, it's bad, it's bad process.
Yeah.
So, all right.
We need a, in just a bit of housekeeping, you are going to have to sign the waiver.
You mean the form to extend?
The form to extend.
And this is for both?
Yes.
The, for the special permit and the subdivision, so who would like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to continue this review until the 13th, 25th, or 21st?
13th.
13th. Second.
Any further discussion? There are none, all of us in favor. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Lot 3, Reardon Way.
Mr. Chair, I do not believe we have a representative here tonight for this, but I can kind of walk through what's going on with this, and.
Okay.
So Suzanne emailed, I mean, mailed, yeah, emailed everyone a copy, I believe, of the letter from Attorney Mirioni, that explained what's going on with this property. Back in 2004, the planning board endorsed an approval-not-required plan for 82R Lincoln Street, presumably believing that they showed Reardon Way as a private way, and there are, were currently, I believe, at that time, three houses that were being served by the roadway. What the board may not have realized at that time is that beyond what is now 82R Lincoln Street, there, and what was being divided as 82R Lincoln Street, the roadway did not extend down to serve that property. So, this is the existing road right here, it ends right here, 82R is here, this property is serviced by a driveway and not by the private way. Actually, this one here, there's, this leads into a driveway, so, number eight, Reardon Way, was not really served by a way, it just had a driveway into that site.
But presumably, it was allowed to be built, because it had frontage on the road that was possibly be built, I suppose.
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure at that time. So, 80, 82R, which is shown here, is 86 Lincoln Street, came to the Conservation Commission with a plan to provide access to the property from the abutting parcel, and at the time, the building inspector and I looked at that, we went down, I did a site inspection, because I couldn't see, looking at the aerial photographs, that the way continued beyond the 82 Lincoln Street property, which is right here. This was all wooded. So, what the applicant is proposing, and Attorney Mirioni discusses in his, in his correspondence to board, they have, through rights of the deed, the ability to improve Reardon Way and access the parcel through Reardon Way, so they're proposing upgrading the whole private way, expanding it from 15, let's see, 10 feet, this first section. Here is 10 feet wide, and they're proposing to expand the paved area to 15 feet, up to Station 1, through Section A, which they show these little brackets here, then from 15 feet to 18 feet, it's Station 2+90, which is located here, and then they would construct the remainder of the way, which would be an 18-foot-wide roadway. They're adding stormwater management by means of a two-foot-wide, two-foot-deep stone trench along that extension on the northern side, and directing flow in that direction, and then along the driveway that would service the parcel itself. They're also providing an emergency turnaround through this driveway in this little hammerhead here, and they've demonstrated on a subsequent sheet, right here, that that, that will work, so it shows that an emergency vehicle can maneuver that, and then I think it's on the previous sheet, that it shows the capability to back out.
So, that would just be for the fire department anyways, to. So that would just be for the fire department anyways, to either approve or not approve.
Right, and that would, so the benefit of doing this is, of course, that the whole roadway would be upgraded. You'd have stormwater management where none exists, and you'd have emergency vehicle turnaround where none really exists.
Storm management only for the addition, right?
Only for the extension.
So, you know, when we look at a common driveway, which this is different, but we consider, you know, like where the water's going to go from the road after it's built. I mean, does that, did anyone look at, has there been any? Has there been any consideration of if the water is actually flowing to that trench? You know, because there's a, you know, there's a house on the other side.
Well, I think the grades show that they're pitching it in that direction. When you look at the profile, they show profiles of each of those sections, and that the contour would pitch at you. And we've been, so this is that section right here. You can see it slopes down.
Okay, so that's right.
Yeah. And we've been out there a couple of times, and I haven't observed stormwater accumulating. I haven't been out there in a storm either, so.
And I was kind of thinking, the part of the road that needs to be, you know, left and built, fully built, I suppose, right?
Right, right.
Give him that as a house, you know, that his head lives in front of it. We didn't want to, you know, make sure the water would go the right way there.
Yep, yep. So what?
Are the requirements for flow of water on normal conditions, normal storm? Or we also contemplate critical extreme conditions of, you know, a lot of snow melting or something due to climate change or whatever is coming at us?
I mean, I'm going to say, based on this, this would be probably a normal storm event, a 10-year storm.
Common conditions.
Right.
Well, as you know, if this were a new five or six, something, there should be a little more of a progress involved with that stormwater, as we just noticed.
This is very, very small.
I did do a little bit of research. It looks like the private way, it wasn't called Reardon Way back then, but it is referred to indeed going back to 1893.
Was it called before?
Private Way.
Oh, that was it?
That was it, Private Way.
So, what are you looking for us to do?
So.
Recommend that they go for a full filing?
Not what, what, see, I'm trying to find the, Suzanne, is there a copy of Walter's letter?
Uh, it's in the file.
If I could, I want to read this section of the bylaw that's quoted in.
He actually put on the.
So, "A street includes a way, having, in the opinion of the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board, sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed uses of the land abutting thereon or served thereby and for the installation of municipal service to serve such land and the buildings erected or to be erected thereon." Therefore, they're seeking a finding that the board has determined this to be sufficient.
And do we have a letter from the fire department?
No, we don't.
Who approved the damage?
We didn't, we did not have it peer reviewed.
And does the lot they're trying to create have 40,000? Can you take yours off one?
Yes, yep. They demonstrated that with their first notice of intent to the Conservation Commission.
Are any neighbors affected by this?
They will be affected by the construction widening the road. But the work is all being done within the.
I think some neighbors actually might have been aware of this, and maybe if they were falling, they would be here, I'm not sure, I don't know.
But did letters go out?
No, no, this was not, there wasn't. Yeah, they would not.
Well, board, what do you care to do?
What are our options exactly?
We could say we'd like to see a formal filing, we could say no, we could say yes. We could, you know, devil's advocate, you say, oh, this is setting a tough precedent. We've had, we had a business that had a small little driveway we may go to peer review, but now we're saying, okay, it's okay, they put a little stone trench, and that's going to take care of stormwater management. But you could say, oh, it's wider, it's better fire access, although we don't have a letter from the fire department. They have in the past, because I was a previous chief, but they have sometimes allowed, I remember 16-foot cleared width. I don't know if we had less than that.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the way I look at it is that, I mean, the planning board approved it, you know, several years ago as a, through the A and R. And the road has, you know, sort of been in existence, and it was never finished at that end. And I don't see that additional lot with. Because, you know, it's not a harm to the neighborhood or to that road if, if it's, you know, if the road's widened and made it more, you know, safer.
What do they have today, gravel road and there's this?
It's paved to the.
It's just narrow.
It's narrow, it's, as you can see, it kind of has a little bit of a wind to it.
I think how I come down on it is if, you know, since they seem to be relying on, okay, it's relying on this because it's increasing safety, and I don't know about the stormwater management, but I'm not hearing from staff that there's really an issue there, so I'll defer to that. But if we're going to, I think I'd feel more comfortable if there was a letter of approval from the fire department, again, because we've done that in the past. And I get worried with precedent, and this is, this one's certainly out there a little bit. So if we're saying that, the presentation I heard says, okay, well, just, you know, if we're going to justify this by saying that it's a public need and public safety is being served, I'd like to hear from our public safety officials that that in fact is the case.
Were you vote to approve contingent?
No, I'm, we're not doing any more contingent, there's no need for that, because nothing's going to happen to it anyways.
Yeah.
And you know what, if they can't wait two weeks to build the house, then they should have started sooner. I'm done, for everybody on TV, I'm done with contingent approvals. We're not doing that anymore. Terrible habit we're getting into. So, I think that's more than fair.
What's the question, no, this is just.
No, I understand, but I just, I'm just tired of it. So, there's no reason that this stuff can't be done ahead of time. So, anybody disagree with that, any thoughts?
No, I like the, I like the concept of not approving with multiple contingencies. So I think that's great, let's, let's keep, let's start working on that.
Is there anything else, so besides the fire, is there anything else we're missing?
As far as questions, right, yeah.
Well, I mean, anything else we need to hear from?
Do you?
It looks to.
Well, because I guess, I mean, it's not creating a lot, the lot already exists, right? So. Would they be able to get a building permit for this lot if the existing condition remained?
No.
And why?
It doesn't have frontage. It doesn't have frontage along a way.
There's no way.
There's no way beyond, yeah, beyond that northern property line.
Is there any, and forgive me, I don't remember the letter. Is there any plan to go public, to make this sort of publicly accepted?
No, no, I think, and I would think that that would be a contingent.
Right, I'd want to keep that in a.
Yeah, because it's not being.
We just handle this with a letter?
Yes, yes. Yes, it would be a letter that the board voted, you know, defined that it was sufficient.
And is it on the map?
And you could include the conditions.
Does the, where the road ends, is that just, is it town of Eastern property, or is it then someone else's property behind, at the end of that road?
It.
That was my concern about the neighbors.
It connects with parcel owned by Friends Crossing, which is the condominium complex. The, and again, based on the letter that Attorney Mirioni provided, the way itself continues right up to the southern portion of both the easterly and westerly parcels. So they're pretty much.
So it's.
It's there already.
And they have the easement, or provides them with the rights of improving the roadway and using the roadway for access to the parcels.
Okay, is, but so does the private way or the easement, does it end where it ends now?
I will.
Where it's proposed to end?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And right to some point.
I was just thinking, like, where does all the snow go? Is there going to be a big snow dump there, or is it?
That's what you're going to have this night, yeah. You no longer can turn your vehicle.
Right, because it's prob, well, right now, it must be just being pushed here. This is all wooded here. And there's really no, you know, I walked it to see if there was a path that maybe had grown in, but it's, you've just got, and it's not an old growth forest, but.
Fire department, you know, say whether or not it's going to be a better situation for them, but.
Right, right.
Fire captain, I could assume that if there were more space at the end, you know, in the winter, when it's, you know, going through the road is difficult, then that might, that could be helpful.
So, in the bylaws, because you see the end of that road, the turn?
Right.
Right there, no, the very end of the road.
Right here.
Yeah, who is the neighbor on that side? Do we have anything on the bylaws, how far a road have to be from whatever is there? What is in there?
No, there's nothing.
Nothing they can add there.
There's nothing like that.
No, and again, if this were, if this were a subdivision, you'd have, they'd be seeking an easement, one would presume of the, a waiver of the easement beyond that, but.
All right, so we'll wait to hear from the fire department. Everybody good?
Yes.
All right. Zoning amendment here. Peter, you'll read this in, please?
Suzanne, please.
This is the urgent one.
One second, one second. Simon, I'm trying to get it, I am so sorry. It's online. I have to find it, just, oh, sorry about that. Hold on.
You want to do this?
Yeah, what, I'm nervous, you don't get it.
No, I, well, Peter can read it from here, I'll get it from here.
You get it from here?
While you do the minutes.
I'm sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Hold on, I can get it. Here, Peter.
Thank you. For all of them, or just?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want me to make it small?
That's okay. Town of Eastern, notice of public care. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 5, MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 15th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Colling A Corona Boardroom at Town Office 136 Elm Street Northeast, for the purpose of receiving public comments concerning the following amendments to Eastern Zoning Bylaw, Eastern Code Book, Chapter 235, zoning, Section 235 to 250, Medical Marijuana Treatment Center and Marijuana Cultivation Overlay District, Section 235 to 260, definitions, map amendment, and to replace all references to the Board of Selectmen in Chapter 235 to Select Board. Copies of the zoning bylaw amendments are available for review at the Planning and Economic Development Office 136 Elm Street Northeast, Massachusetts, on the Planning Department website. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated for the public hearing. This notice is also available at masspublicnotices.org. Gregory Strange, Chair.
The floor is yours, Stephanie.
Okay, so this series of amendments proposes to expand the existing Medical Marijuana Treatment Center Overlay District, which is co-terminous with the industrial park, to add cultivation facilities regardless of whether it's medical or recreational, and to add two properties, 642 and 644 Turnpike Street, for the, to the district, but only for use as a cultivation facility. So you're not, the proposal does not propose to change the types of uses that are allowed at the existing overlay district that covers the industrial park. It, but the two additional parcels that are being added to the district would be restricted to cultivation only. And we also have here with us tonight Todd Farnard from Farnard Properties. He is the owner of the property, and his company is interested in a cultivation facility at the site. And he's here to answer any questions or the board might have. And I believe we have some members of the public here for the.
Okay, well, we will, we will open up the floor to the board members first, any questions or comments, and we'll start off the audience. So, no, so I just, I, I guess, one of the reasons this came up, and the discussions that I had with town administrator, and I'm assuming, or maybe I'm not assuming correctly, but any deal with the town is out there yet? Wonder if this is out for a select.
It was talked about at the Select Board meeting, and I think Todd can actually talk to that. There is, you know, separate and aside from the fact that now you have two vacant parcels that would be put into an active use, commercial use, that would generate real estate revenue, tax revenue. It, the town could also and would also enter into a community host agreement with Farnard. And I believe that, what, it's up to 3% of the revenue that's generated by the facility that would be available to the town. Now, the uses for that money, that revenue, has to be put towards areas that would have an impact on the town as a result of having a cultivation facility. So it can go to public safety, it can go to education for addiction and other uses like that.
And is there an estimate, what, at 3%?
Todd, would you like to talk to that at this point?
Sure.
Sure, yeah, you scrub my shirt, please, thanks.
Introduce yourself.
Sure.
Just thought, maybe just, in case anyone is watching TV and they don't know where we're talking about, can you put the map up?
Yes.
I know we're not talking about the map now, but this definitely helps people understand.
I'm actually going to go to the website, so people.
So the last two lots, as I understand it, on Turnpike Street, has.
Should we? I presume this is.
Yeah, it's outside.
Okay. So my name is Todd Farnard. I am the CEO of Farnard Properties. Our family has owned the properties since somewhere in the early 1980s with the Cari's family. The property has sat dormant. Occasionally, we've blocked it off from hunters and things of the sorts, but we basically have had no real utility for the property. We've, at one point, thought that perhaps if there was development happening on the town side, that this would become a commercially valuable piece of property, and it hasn't. And so, in the meanwhile, I have found myself, as a license holder, of a marijuana, full vertical marijuana dispensary cultivation license. I came to the town a year and a half ago or so to inquire what the rules were here, what the appetite was for specifically cultivation, with the idea being that we could, on the property, locate a footprint of somewhere between 20,000 and 80,000 square feet, or 40,000 to 60,000 square feet. 20,000 and 80,000 square feet, or 40,000 to 60,000 square feet, on the parcel, and build a fairly simple butler building, or, when I have some precedent imagery of the types of buildings that are being built for the use, and cultivate marijuana. And that was a conversation that began after I had gone to natural resource, the environmental.
Natural heritage?
Natural heritage, excuse me, thank you very much. Chris Lucas from Lucas Engineering went. We studied the property just to make sure that there wasn't anything particularly unique that couldn't be worked around. And then I got to Stephanie's office and started the conversation there. So that's the backdrop. In response to your question, in terms of revenue, it really would depend upon how big of a facility we were able to sort of successfully work with the town and fit on the property and develop. But studies correct, in the host community agreement allows for up to 3% of revenues, and we would expect to be entering into an agreement with the town for that sort of a host community agreement. In terms of the yield and what does that equate to? I would be shooting from the hip if I told you at 10,000 feet it was this yield, and at 20,000 feet it was that, it was more. I don't know if in any of the prior submissions, I know at one point, one of my associates did some math and handed it off to Stephanie's office, and I'm not sure if you have that available. If you don't, I can try to find it in the interim.
Well, I think it was in the Select Board's packet, so I can.
Is it hydrophonic?
Is it?
Hydrophonic.
Oh, hydroponic?
Yeah.
Not necessarily, not necessarily, although that's one methodology that's used. But oftentimes, we will use soil, so it's not entirely sort of, you know, floated in the water ethos, or however hydroponic actually works.
It's completely enclosed.
Completely enclosed.
And I'm assuming, for you know, the folks, some of us have toured facilities as laws have passed in the state to help form a bylaws, and a few of the facilities, I want to add, had pretty extensive, very impressive, I would say, security.
Yeah, there are very strict guidelines.
Could you explain a little what is included on security and safety on this?
Sure, sure. First and foremost, it is a fenced property, so it's, the design of which is not to allow sort of traffic. It was, a lot, a lot was spoken about in terms of sort of the visibility of it. There are no windows, it's an industrial, call it a butler building, a metal-sided box typically. Within that box, that's where the real science happens, because you have, for each grow room is really its own sort of self-contained unit with its own air, air systems that are not cross-pollinated or with the others. So it's a, it is a electrical HVAC water-infused box. And a plant, this plant is grown in that box, and it is sort of brought through, it's from seed all the way to harvest where it's dried. In talking to the town, I think it was made clear that it was just for cultivation, not for the manufacturing, certainly not for retail. But the, typically, these buildings would house a manufacturing facility where the plant would then be extracted, the process to extract, the THC and the CBD would take place. My understanding is that in this particular case, there would be no manufacturing, that it would just be cultivation, and then we would bring it to another site within the state of Massachusetts, because it can't cross state lines, and we would manufacture it elsewhere.
Of course, yeah, this is exactly like a business approval, or just, you know, laying the groundwork by amending the zoning bylaw and the map.
Sure.
Of course.
There's more to be done, but, of course, and I would expect to go through, obviously, all of those processes with each of the town.
Yeah, well, I was gonna touch on that. So Stephanie, the steps are, if we vote to approve the zoning bylaw, why don't you talk to the next steps?
So I'm gonna back up even before that. A companion article that would need to go to town meeting would be, you'll recall in 2018, the town voted to prohibit all adult-use marijuana facilities within the town. So one of the companion articles is to prohibit all record, all adult-use marijuana with the exception of cultivation facilities. So if the board does vote to approve, a letter goes to the Board of Selectmen, letting, the Select Board, letting them know that the board has approved this and is recommending it to town meeting. It is on the agenda, on the warrant article, and the Select Board will vote to support, or not support. We expect that they will vote to support. They voted four to one to put it on the warrant. And then it goes to town meeting for the vote. And the first article would be the article amending the prohibition, and that would be followed by each of these articles in the order that they're presented to you. And as with any zoning amendment, Greg will do an on-the-floor report to the, to the town meeting, letting them know that the board voted to support the amendment.
Right, so kind of our job is to handle the logistics of getting the bylaw rewritten correctly.
Yes.
And then another section is to consider whether this is a good zoning change for the town, and whether we think that the town maybe should have a chance to.
That's right, that's right.
Decide if they want this in their town.
If it passes, this would be subject to site plan approval, as any other project. And I think because it's in the overlay district, it's actually a special permit.
Right. And I would hope, or I would think, and I guess I just say this clearly, and one of the reasons I wanted you to lay out the process was that I look at our job here, we have the Planning and Zoning Board, and I would certainly want us to review the wording of the amendments. And I would hope that we would, knowing that the Board of Selectmen, who are, who appointed us and who are elected by the townspeople, that we would, you know, that we should move this up, so that, you know, this is something for the townspeople to decide and process. I wouldn't want to see it handled by, you know, one board here or there. But I think our job, if we feel it's amended properly, written properly, I think we should bump it to the Board of Selectmen, our elected body, that they can decide. And then if they so decide, then it would go to the entire town, which is really where it should be decided, for the citizens. So I guess, I think our job is to look at this really from just a structural entity of the zone.
So, all right, nice first question about the structural aspect, which I, you can go to ways. You know, it just, I don't know the exact history of the evolution of these laws through the referendum, and then the, you know, the, what laws have been passed, you know. But it seems like whenever one use is allowed, it sort of like, ends up being like a backdoor for the next level. And I don't really understand, you know, where, where that comes from, and how we can make sure that it would stay as just cultivation only, and not move to manufacturing, and then to possibly some sort of, you know, like sales or something.
Can you give an example of one reason that's happened?
I don't know, I can't think of any.
Oh, at Easton?
No, well, at Easton, no, just, no, and.
Or in Jet, anyway.
No, it's fine. I have to tell you, I'm not an expert on the evolution and the, you know, how these, all these marijuana laws have come about and, you know, actually gone through. So that's why I'm asking the question is, it seems like at some points, there was sort of like, allowing one use would sort of like, kind of like, the next one that, if a law changed, then it would become the next one.
Yeah.
And maybe I'm wrong.
I can't speak to other communities what I know, and I think that Todd can attest to this, is that a lot of communities are looking to allow adult-use, adult-use marijuana establishments, dispensaries. I know that there are communities that are looking to establish the cafes as well as cultivation and manufacturing. I think that the Select Board and, I'm going to presume, but I'm not going to speak on behalf of the Planning Board, that there is a respect for the vote in 2018 for full prohibition, and just a sense that, you know, cultivation, especially in an area that is really separated from other activities and businesses would be inappropriate, allowed use.
So my opinion, Greg, I read through this, and it covers a lot of details, including, because the first question in my mind, and this is the reason we are here, I think, is trying to protect against what can go wrong. And maybe it's a question to you, it's an unfair question, because it's an open question, but what can go wrong that we have not included in our bylaws? It says that we need to approve the plans, and the police needs to be notified, and you need to, there's a list of 20 or 30 things here. It looks that it covers everything, but what can go wrong? What should be looking that we put here to cover all the details that.
Sure.
Things that can impact us, our population here, the people on this, the environment.
I mean, the first thing that comes to mind is that these facilities are energy hogs, just being, I mean, it takes a lot of, a lot of energy to run. So I, I don't, I'm not fully versed in the eastern power grid or the eastern water, eastern, Town of Eastern Water System, but I think, I mean, we have miles to go before this becomes reality here. There's a town meeting, there's all of these steps, but among them, I would say, would be to make sure that we have the proper water and, water and electric, sort of, you know, that our needs and the capacity of the system.
Infrastructure.
That the infrastructure matches. Now, I believe it does, and I believe that it's achievable, but I'm searching admittedly a little to find what some of the challenges are. I mean, it is a, it is a very well-protected metal box growing a singular plant or singular type of plant. That plant will be harvested, dried, and brought somewhere else. It's a, easy for me to say, and extremely self-serving for me to say, I admit it, but it's a fairly benign activity that's happening there. You're growing a plant indoors and taking it elsewhere. We are required by the state to have fencing, a security system, backups for the security system. The, you know, the people who work there need to be, go through significant checks, just because that's the way that the industry has basically established that they will maintain safety and order. So we will be obviously following all of those regulations. And so, is it a fear, not fear, is there a risk of, is there a greater fire risk? No, not than any other use. I mean, I'm playing out your question a little bit, but I'm hard-quested.
It's fire, you're really, oh, hi, right?
Todd, what about aroma or smells?
Sure, there are mitigations.
Pollution in general.
Yeah, the odors, there are all kinds of filtration systems and requirements put in different towns and different communities. And I would expect to be working with the Board of Health, or whether it's the Board of Health or the Fire Department, to come up with sufficient filtration that met their needs. But we would be bringing to them sort of the litany, the menu of different filtration systems that are, that we'd be able to implement and work with them to pick the right one, or right ones.
Do you own already facilities like this, working?
I do not yet own a cultivation facility. We own a property in Newton on Route 9 that will be our first dispensary. We control land in two different parts of Boston, where we're proposing dispensaries in Boston. So our retail footprint, we've established. The cultivation side of it, we are in all likelihood cultivating in the towns of, excuse me, Franklin and Pittsburgh. But this is, if, you know, I'm pursuing a variety of options so that we can, if this, if this is, if this is agreeable, amenable, allowable by the Town of Easton and the voters, then we would, you know, happily build a building and start that process. But it's, it's a component of the larger license that we're doing.
How many working sites like this one we have in Massachusetts?
I wish my partner Victor were here, he knows exactly. I think that today, we have 23 cultivation facilities across the state, but in the pipeline, there are many, many coming. I think it's had a, I mean, Amazon has had the most profound impact on the industrial market, but I think the cannabis industry has as well, where there's a lot of industrial property that was adaptively reused into cultivation facilities, because they were big, typically columnless boxes, that you could put a series of smaller boxes into. But that's something that we would build in this case, there's no building there.
You said that you visit, Greg, places where they're divided here? Is there any possibility of getting from these towns some information about what is their experience? It might translate in things where this is urgent and needs to go through, but.
I guess I don't understand your question, I'm sorry.
If you consult with the town, that already have a facility like this, and say, okay, what do you learn, what is the actual experience? Too late.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, well, it's not too late. I mean, there's gotta be a public hearing with the Board of Selectmen, and it'll be on the floor of the town meeting. What we did with Medical Marijuana first passed, the Director of Plan, Tom Gary Anderson, and myself visited the site down in Providence. It was Rhode Island's largest facility, an old, former post office. And in fact, the former, I forget his title, the former head of the Rhode Island State Police was in charge of security there. You went through, went through four doors, cameras everywhere. It was amazing, right, every, all the micro, I mean, there was two dozen micro environments in there set up. But, so, you know, I looked at, personally, how I look at this is, this was passed by the citizens of Massachusetts, not by everyone, obviously. But it is now, it is now legal, and I think folks are maybe becoming a little, it's on the ground running, so they're a little more used to it. You know, one of the, I'm on a number of boards in town, and one of the things I've done is how difficult it is for, you know, state aid continues to drop, CPA match continues to drop, liabilities, financial liabilities of towns continue to go up. And it's so hard, you know, so hard to get, you know, so here, in a secure, anonymous, self-contained business, I look at this as a new building's going up in a rather neglected part of town. It is a increase in our tax base, and we've always been talking about economic development. And then in this case, as I understand it, we'd be looking at a, you know, at least five years of a commitment that's well into six figures. So I look at that and say, there's a, there's a source of income to the town, and that doesn't require anybody to be, no signage outside, that, you know, that requires no, nobody to, to do anything that they don't want to do, you know? And, you know, I think there's a, there are a number of businesses in town, which I think folks, you know, in industrial progress, if folks knew they were there, would be really surprised. So, yeah, that's pretty common in industrial zones. So I look at this as a, personally, to me, this is, this is a win-win. There's lots of questions to be answered between now and then. But, you know, I've, I can't think of any, I haven't heard of any large issues in terms of grow facilities that towns have experienced.
Well, and I'm not.
The question was, is there anything on the bylaws that we are not covering? And my personal opinion, no. After reading this, and the fact that we need to approve plans, and we need to approve, that's one obvious question that will arise.
Well, I was gonna say, this bylaw, just out of the history of this, this was written, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think, the state had quite a bit of, there's extensive guidelines by the state, so we did this bylaw, we followed, we went to a number of conferences in the.
Oh, MMA.
At the MMA, you know.
It's clear, I read it, it's clear.
Right, so now, we're pretty much just kind of editing this lightly, because it's really, it's really been gone over with by the conference.
And, and, Amos, and to add on to that, since that time, the town council, the firm that the town uses for legal advice and support, hired a woman, Kate Fedoroff, and she reviewed all of this. She actually has become very educated on marijuana, that's kind of her specialty. She did a workshop for the Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors, along with Lisa Mead, who's from the same firm. And so she reviewed the changes, because it's, Greg. the changes, because as Greg pointed out, I mean, I went in and made the edits, but she went in and reviewed it, and added all the, um, proper references to the new regulations, because of course, with the adult use and the Cannabis Control Commission, the, the regulations change, so.
So she had to like, like, some of the technical, the binding and additions, right?
Right, and that, and she really understands what communities can and can't do.
I, I read it, I couldn't find anything that... I have a highlighter in my hand, I guess.
And, and just, just to add to just personal experience, I live in Brockton, and I, I drive by, and I also bicycle on a regular basis by the, two of the facility, the dispensaries that are located in Brockton, and I can tell you, aside from the interest, and Todd and I were talking about this, the interesting names that kind of get you to go, hmm, like Commonwealth Alternative Care, and To Your Good Health, and, um, the names, you, you'd never know that these were dispensaries. And again, that's not what we're talking about, you're talking about cultivation.
This is, this is the bylaw to open the option, basically.
So you can... Right, it, it's, it's step one, I guess.
And, and, so, um, just to show, do you have any, would you care to...
No, my concerns is I live at 640...
Okay, if you, I just, if you're, I just need to ask you to identify yourself using the microphone, sorry, it has to go out on the record.
Hi, my name's Dan Winters, I reside at 640 Churn Place Street, I've owned that property for eighteen years, um, I bought the property, it's at 642 and 644, um, obviously, I have similar concerns regarding environmental impact, safety, but the biggest impact is on my property, um, what's it going to do to, to my location, is how is that gonna affect my property value with putting these facilities? You're asking to amend it, to put sixty-five acres into, uh, turn it into a marijuana facility, um, right now, you own eighty thousand square feet, when does that become a hundred and twenty thousand, or much larger, depending upon what happens with the laws of Massachusetts, and how those bylaws are changed in the future? Um, I'm not planning on moving from my house, I raised two children there, graduated from Oliverings High School, and I was planning on staying there, and, uh, it's just a concern of mine, that, uh, my property's going to be affected. Uh, I'm not against the marijuana cultivation, we have an area in Easton, in the industrial park, that's been designated, there's no residents that live in that area, there's no residents that have to take, um, have to be affected by that, and like you said, things that happen in industrial area, people in the town don't know about, which is fine, that's where the industrial park should be used, but if there's residents that are going to be nearby to these facilities, um, I, I don't think that's right for residents in the Town of Easton.
What, what specifically are your concerns?
My biggest concern is my property value first, my second concerns are, um, like you said, there's plenty of security, and that means there's going to be fences facing my property, I have a pool in the backyard, um, in the bylaws, we talk about locations where children play, and playgrounds and public parks, I have nieces and nephews and daughters and friends of kids that come to my house and go in my backyard and play in my pool, I don't want them to have to deal with that kind of facility near my house.
You can add another one, traffic.
What's that?
You will have trucks and traffic.
Yeah, there'll be cars and vehicles and traffic, I mean, I live next to, I live in, I, I, you know, going through this, obviously, I, I don't have the experience of zoning laws or anything like that, but receiving the letter from the town, I've gone through a lot of things, and I understand where my zoning is now, and I have the, uh, trucking company that lives, that's right next to me, on, on the opposite side of me, but, um, you know, uh, I bought my property knowing that they were going to be there, I, I have a relationship with the, the owner of the property, you know, when I have issues, I work with them on things, um, like I said, they're not, also not cultivating something that, you know, something like marijuana, I understand it's just benign, like you said, it's a plant being grown in a facility, but it's not a plant that I'd own next to my property.
I guess, no, it's zoned business, correct, or zoned industrial?
It's currently zoned industrial.
Industrial, so...
And I'm not sure how my property isn't zoned industrial too, but it is.
Well, yeah, because when you think they would've, right, um, they...
The zoning was probably changed after, right, after...
They probably went X number of feet along.
Right.
Right, um, I guess, you'll, I, 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 I certainly understand your, your concerns, um, and, you know, I always talk a little zoning, you know, sometimes someone screams zoning, you know, to, you know, someone that's anti-regulation, like, oh, zoning's good, because it helps.
No, I, I, I understand.
Right, but, but, yeah, but I get your, right, you're a resident in, in an industrial zone, I, I get that, you know, then, let's say this does pass, you know, through the whole town, let's say if this building were to come to fruition, um, because not only is that we can't, you know, people do have a right to develop their property within, you know, zoning, uh, you know, when someone comes to us to build a, whether it's to build a house, or to build a commercial building, if they meet all of the bylaws, nothing requiring, you know, variance, there's, there's really nothing we can do to, to stop that, we have to allow that, but what we do, we go through site plan review, uh, because every site is different, um, sometimes for, for concerns of the butters, sometimes environmental, um, and, you know, if, if this were to pass, um, at, you know, I, I think the most, eh, the, the most, uh, how would I say this, the most that this board could do for you, or the, or the town that we could do the most for you, would be, okay, um, if, if the town passes this, they're allowed to create this building by right, well, we could try to alleviate some of your concerns, maybe not all of them, but there's, you know, maybe that, that, you know, maybe there's a bad thing to help delineate properties, or, you know, to, for privacy.
Buffer zones.
Yeah, exactly, you know, um, recently, we had a commercial building, and that was allowed, it said it was a, it was a business zone, a little further up on Route 138, sorry by houses, but yeah, how was, how was this business zone, they, they had a right to do what they want, but it's, there was, you know, we, well, you know, we worked, uh, pretty extensive landscaping, you know, in some buffer zones to, to try to, you know, it's, it's a difficult balance sometimes, to have business and residential together, or industrial residential together, um, that's, but that, that's one of the functions anyways, of, of the planning board, and, so I know that doesn't answer all, all of your questions, but that's, you know, um, that's...
Right, and as part of site plan review, um, the planning board would expect, uh, for the proponent to provide, um, the number of vehicles that will be coming in, both from the employees that'll be working there, also, and the trucks, how many veh, uh, trucks are going in, what kind of shipments are going in and out, that type of thing, and make sure that, you know, again, the, um, the site can accommodate that, as well as the, as the road, it is, it is an industrialized road, and it's a central arterial corridor.
No, it is industrial, but I mean, I guess the question right now is, is, is it gonna get passed for, um, you know, medical cultivation, marijuana cultivation, and what I'm asking here is to not pass from equipment, so then we don't have to go to the planning, we don't have to go through the whole process, if it's not approved, then we're not gonna build it.
And it, it, right, and it's...
So, I mean, right now, it's about the amendment to be passed for approval, it from here goes to the town hall meeting, um, I'm asking not to approve it, I'll do the same at the town meeting.
Sure, and I, and I think that's the...
You know, I'm, I'm gonna continue through the process, I understand, I'm, I'm coming here, you know, I'm coming here as the owner of a property in Easton as a resident, and I, I'm just letting you know that.
Sure, yeah, and I, I just wanna let you, personally, you know, how I look at this is, um, I look at it from a zoning standpoint, and, and, you know, sometimes I look at things and, okay, well, if, they're, you know, um, we're looking at a, a majority of industrial area with a few houses, you know, and I, you know, to what I would say, if people don't want that to be industrial, then they should, they should try to change that zoning, you know, as a zoning board member, I have to look and say, well, okay, prior to us, it was determined by the town, through town meeting, you know, this is all done, this was to be an industrial area, so, you know, it, that, that, that's one of the reasons why we have zoning rights, because, because, because nobody wants anything next to them of any type, you know, it's just the way that's, but, right, once our house is built, we don't want any of those, that's, and I used to think it was a Massachusetts thing, that's a national thing, I've been to enough zoning boards around my country, but, um, so, yeah, that, you're right, you should, you know, you should go out and...
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, obviously, to my being, uh, I bought my house when I was twenty-three, I was naive to what rules and zoning and everything like that was, I mean, I bought the house because I was having children, and I, I needed somewhere to raise them, and so I, I went into it, um, I, I purchased the house, and from the previous owner, I had it got into a discussion about the property next to us, and it seemed like, you know, I probably should've done more research, but as, as a twenty-three-year-old buying house, it was kind, kind of over my head at the time that I purchased anyways, I mean, over the years, I've just become lax, because the property's never been touched, every once in a while, Hunter would come into my yard and be like, I've got a tree stand set up back there, and I'd say, I'd say, as long as your gun's not pointed towards my house, I'm okay with that, I have no idea who owns the property, so, um, it, I mean, it does, it falls on me, I should've done more research, but here we are today, um, and I own the property at 640, and it's just, I mean, as you said, on a personal level, I don't think, you know, it's fine, the facilities you can ride by, I mean, I work in all over Massachusetts, and I've driven by the facilities, I have a lab in Fall River, that I drove, seen the one down by the casino, driven by, you know, and I'm, again, I'm not against it, it's great revenue for taxpayers, I just feel like putting them next to a resident is just, I mean, would any of you want one of them located next to your house? Is the ultimate question you need to ask yourself when you're voting for this, I mean, it's my house, and they're gonna put it next to me.
To your original question, I would say this, um, your, your question was, what would this do to my property, and I'm not gonna pretend that, who knows, uh, but, there certainly is a plethora of examples, uh, I mean, that is a neglected industrial area, I think it's safe to say, um, and it's a, you know, sparsely populated residential area, and much of Route 138 Franklin is that, and, um, investment, if this were to go through a substantial investment, granted, it's industrial, uh, there, there's certainly precedent out there that it could, and, you know, uh, it could be good for your property, though, maybe not the way that you want, and I understand that, and to answer your question, because I do live with zoning, and so, right, when I bought my house, I, you know, I, so often I would hear people in there saying, when I bought that house, I was always told that was gonna be treated over there, well, I know where my property line ends, and I know I don't have a say in other people's property, and I don't mean that towards you, but, but the, the, it is what it is, so I, I think, um, I, I just wanted to, you know, certainly hear what you're saying, and, and if we were to vote positive tonight, it's not that we didn't take, uh, what you said into consideration, but, you know, personally, I think this is a, a choice that needs to go before the whole town, um, for, for the reasons that I said earlier, you know, um, yeah, again, because that's our job, is, I think, as the zoning board, this, this area is, it's not like they're trying to change the zoning, uh, it is, well, trying to amend it, but, but it's in, you know, they're not trying to change the base zoning of this property.
I would just add, sorry that we've not met, so, sorry for this, um, but I would, if I was smart, I would sit with you and, and ask you what sorts of, um, screenings, I mean, and, and you may say to me, no, I, I'm not supporting this, the answer's no, or we might sit down and talk about what we could do to design it so that it, it doesn't impact your pool, or your people, or your, what have you, and I'm happy, I'm open to that conversation, but I also understand completely where you're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, my first, my, my first fight is to not allow it to happen, and then, I mean, after that, obviously, I'm gonna stay involved and try to make sure that, you know, that causes the least amount of impact on there.
And i- if I could just add to that, i- if this does pass, because again, it's a special permit, um, I think the board is particularly sensitive to the fact that, you know, you are a property owner next to, uh, what could potentially be this type of facility, that, again, if, I, I, it sounds like, Bernard, they would be willing to work and sit with you, and I think the board would consider, again, mitigation measures as part of the site plan.
Yeah, when this first came up, the first discussion Stephanie and I had about this is, you know, butters to the property have to be, but we know that there's more residents, you know, so, we, that's why we sent the letter, so let's send a, we both agree, let's send a letter out to, to that whole stretch of residences, because we get, we get that it is, you know, it's a sensitive subject, and any, any industrial slash residential, you know, sort of, uh, combination like that is, is always tricky, and certainly one, you know, such a new and controversial, so, okay, so...
Very, uh, minor comment, exactly, on some of the, I remember items, um, there was some, some comments in some semicolons, I don't know if you just wanna look at it and just maybe that consisted, unless there's a purpose for comments in semicolons under the ones.
Well, the semicolon, um...
If you separate it, no, that wasn't sharp, you can't stop.
When you have an or, it's a semicolon, and then or, a detail, so there's no semicolon there.
Okay, all right, all right, as long as you spell it like that, yeah, the one, the one was missing, but that's okay, just go through it, so...
So, uh, so we have, so there's four, four things we're discussing, three related to the medical marijuana, I mean, to marijuana cultivation, correct?
Yes, oh, yes, that's right, and we didn't talk about the, um, the Fourth Amendment, which is just the general, the, um, former, formerly, the, um, Select Board was the Board of Selectmen, and annual town meeting was passed May 2019, uh, the motion had, uh, the article passed to change that to Select Board, um, to modernize it and make it gender neutral, in order for, if, select, the Board of Selectmen is referenced quite a bit in the zoning bylaw, and therefore, it requires a hearing of the planning board to recommend the change, and this too has to go to town meeting for a vote, so this is really a housekeeping item to make the zoning bylaw consistent with the general bylaw that, the town charter that identifies the Board of Selectmen now as the Select Board.
Gender neutral.
Gender neutral.
I'm for passing that part.
So, uh, do we, is this sort of a on-revoked motion?
That's up, that's up to the board, how, how you would like to do it, you could, you could vote the slate of amendments, or you could vote each one individually, you could take the marijuana's one.
Yeah, maybe, I'm, I'm...
The county general, I think, he's proposed...
Uh, Suzanne's correcting me, she wants, she wants a, she...
Four separate?
She wants a se- four separate votes.
Okay, the motion to recommend, um, the proposed zoning amendment for section 235-50.
To move.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Okay.
Motion to recommend the zoning amendment to section 235-60. Definitions.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Uh, that's the end, that is.
A motion to, um, recommend the zoning map amendment to expand the Medical Marijuana Treatment Center and marijuana cultivation overly distant.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Just future reference, I, I think we should, like, for town meeting, because this abouts the, where's the property, I'm in the property, the, the town.
The town line, you, I...
I think we should put that on, just, just for reference, you know.
This was an abstract, yes, yes, yep.
Right, right, so, just, just wanted to point that out, um, any further discussion?
That is it. Hearing none, all those in favor? Zero.
One, a motion to re- to recommend the amendment to chapter 235 of Easton Town Code to update all references of Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
Second. All those in favor? Four, zero. All right, appeal.
Mr. Winters, thank you. Mr. Winter, thank you, appreciate you coming in. All right, meeting minutes, uh, September 23rd, 2019. I, just one thing I wanted to do, Suzanne, it was on second page.
Uh huh.
Um, one, two, three, four, five, six paragraph down. Mr. Strange said previously, um, I guess that, that just that roof drains infiltration, just to sort of.
That this, this proved that.
Just this should be changed to roof drains infiltration, or infiltration of roof drains, yeah.
I thought I wrote that, that's funny.
Says it down below, sort of.
I thought I snuck it.
I just wanna sound smarter.
Okay, and then that's.
It was hopeless at this point. Anyone else?
Yeah, no, yeah, just on, on Weber Farm, page four, I think I was just, um, like, questioning whether what, there was a, like, a square foot limitation on, to those, to those households.
So where's that?
Uh, page four, a little, a little farther than halfway out, just say,
Yeah, that's very far.
Say, 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 Mr. Duchaine asked if, if there, uh, if, if there was a limitation on the, um, on the square footage for, for homes, is that, um, brought it?
On the square footage, just something's.
Motion to approve the man's would-be changes.
Second.
What's that?
Uh, all in favor? Oh, motion better. All right, um, nothing to report? Exhausted, that's our report. Um, oh, let's do ZBAs. This is four. Ten, oh, 15 summer.
No, it's okay.
I think the question was why it didn't be so close.
Cause this will also cause an empty bylaw being put in from top of the line.
Someone put line, or four, three?
Something like that.
Like, yeah.
How, how close, how close that is?
Oh, no, this right.
Four hundred and nine, four, six?
Four for five.
No, don't, I don't.
Yeah.
And it shows the driveway on the other person's property.
Right.
So the.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a drawing, did it, is it drawing?
So to, 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 to Chris's point, um, yeah, well, that's pretty tight, isn't it? It doesn't show, especially if it doesn't show the right filtration of the driveway.
Yeah, the driveway actually goes to the line.
Oh, no, the plan shows the right look.
But the, the narrative states that the driveway goes over the line.
Well, it goes a little.
But it does go over the line.
Uh, well, it just had a little bump here, oh.
Okay.
But there's no reason they couldn't put the grass on the backside of the house.
It's in the line, most of the driveway is.
Right, it's gotta redo the deck, but.
Yeah, no.
Plenty of room to make it work.
Or even shifted a little, even a little bit to go.
Turn it ninety, ninety degrees, attach it to the house in the back.
I don't feel that.
The deck, deck is not the.
I think it might've come down.
Yeah, I'm thinking it comes down.
Make a, make a.
He might have the.
Right, there's a lot of room there.
Can be, can be attached to that.
Motion not to recommend ZBAs.
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Um, so, anyone, these, uh, postdocs?
Yes, we received, and you all should have a copy of this, a notice from the postal office, and it's a guide for developers. They sent it to the towns and into planning departments because we have some level of control. What they're looking for is, um, it clustered, um, mailboxes or mailrooms. So, the centralized deliveries required for mail delivery in all new developments and for renovations to existing apartment buildings. For residential neighborhoods, centralized delivery to cluster box units is preferred. And I think this is what they proposed and are doing for Weber Farm, right Greg? They have the mailboxes all at the front entrance, and then wall boxes or mailrooms, um, in any type of apartment building, high-rise, assisted living, et cetera. And that they like to see space for large mail items, so.
You almost wanna put this in the barners.
Yeah, well, that's, that is a question.
Well, because it says, it says, because I don't, I, in Easton, I don't think it's been an issue here. I mean, that, I think most of the develop, we don't have that many developments in town. Most of them, no, they talked to the, the post office first. Um, 'cause I look here and it says, I mean, I, we can require, I'm fine with that, but it says, um, for, what did I just say? For residential neighborhoods, centralized delivery, cluster box units, CBUs, is preferred.
Right.
Not required, but.
Right.
So then, just, so think of it, now, where, you're just talking about Weber, so, and Drunus did that, and, and then there's, fourteen, you're.
Yeah, Easton, yeah.
So then think of, um.
Family Estates.
Yeah.
I don't think.
I don't recall there being that there, and there's like, double the amount, right, like twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-six lots.
Right.
So I guess my only concern is if it, you think of what you say, okay, we could require, but then does it?
It's going to take more land for larger.
It's gonna, it's gonna take more land, it's gonna take more pavement, because you're gonna need a pull-over area, and then that kind of will, that goes against some of the things.
Right.
So I think we could say, I mean, you know, I mean, are you, what do you think, how, do you have a recommendation?
I, I thought we could discuss it and get a sense from the board. I, I, I agree, I think, I think in smaller subdivisions, it makes a lot of sense, and I don't think it's going to be as big a deal, because the number of units won't take up as much space. However, what, as you pointed out, there's something, and, and that's not even a large subdivision. I mean, can you imagine, Easton's not going to see.
There's always crossing, crossing, basically.
Forty and, and fifty.
I mean, if we wanted to put in a rule of the reg, something that, you know, along per the, you know, USPS guidelines.
Strongly suggested or.
You know, the CB, CBUs are preferred.
Yeah.
Uh, but the board will consider, you know, a preferred, um, but, you know, we should look at how it affects other.
Well, obviously, for the postal service, it's a matter to be centralized.
Right, oh, yeah, exactly, yeah, that's right.
That's what we are trying to do.
This one's based for, like, say, those, you know, the Amazon boxes, where the box is this big, and there's a thing like that big inside.
Maybe they should be, they should be, uh.
My, my son bought a, a new house, an apartment, and they have a centralized place, but of course, the Amazon truck comes in front of the house.
So they do that, yeah. I've had, we have. Have, now, have you had Amazon delivered by the postal office?
I've had, I can't believe it.
I have a few times, I've had the post, my, you know, so, thinking of things, and I have one of those big mailboxes, sometimes you get something that won't fit in.
No, they, they, yeah, they actually have a big contract, a big contract where they were hiring kind of like new postal employees to do Sunday deliveries.
For that, had different sort of rates and things like that. So, I mean, the, the, do we need to, I mean, do CBUs need to be larger to, you know? So, I mean, it's something we're thinking about.
Exactly, it is not, and I'm not joking, it's not far from the time we, drones would be delivering to old houses.
And they will have.
We need to start adapting to where it's coming.
Yeah, that's where they're going, just anyways, right, so, but. They all have any.
We're all the same, so your house to deliver.
No, they're just, they're just.
They just don't wanna have to deliver a twenty mailbox.
I almost, part of me always thinks, you know, we, I mean, if we wanted to write something, then we could, but we should say, you should consult with the local, 'cause it's, it's how it's always been, run at the local post office. 'Cause there had been times that they said, you know, nope, you had to go central.
Right, so.
Part of me back saying, we need to put a twenty by twenty building here for the mail, and yeah, that will, yeah, that's true, that's true.
So how's this? Um, the board was supposed to take up rewriting or reviewing and updating the subdivision rules and regulations. It didn't happen last year, uh, we haven't really worked on it this year, um, maybe that goes on.
Oh, yeah, this is the first of the year, I think, um, that'll be one of the, yeah, good, we need to do that.
We'll try to figure out the best.
So, yes, I'll file this till then, and, uh, you guys put on those thinking apps and, you know. Hey, we should come up with a drone, uh, landing zone, or something, DLZ.
On schedule, on schedule.
Right.
And the schedule, I'm gonna get all angry, you can tell, I'm kind of the first thing, so they're back asleep. And, uh, about all these Tuesdays, I sound like, oh, it's all holidays, it's all holidays.
Let me explain, right, and so last year, when the, the board, I, you know, it's the same time of year, Greg, because it's your big, your big, uh, shows and everything. The board did not like the idea of the Tuesday nights and moving out of schedule. The problem is that we, we're trying to schedule the planning board meetings offset of the select board meetings. And that's twofold, because I frequently need to go to select board meetings, but also Greg, when we have zoning changes, so through, um, you know, starting December, right through just before town meeting, if there were zoning articles, um, updates that need to be given, it's difficult for both Greg and I to get to the select board meetings and attend the planning board meetings. So this reflects off weeks to the select board's, um, meeting agenda. And then, and that's what they do, that, that's where it gets messed up, because they'll go through and it'll be regular and go, okay, we've got, and they, they really feel very strongly that, because they're the select board and, and they're expected to meet on Monday nights, that should be, it's problematic. So, um, before we finalize this, I wanted to review it and, um, get a sense. I mean, it seems that the most critical time, again, where there's a conflict with select board meetings is between December and up to town meeting. Although the fall kind of starts to heat up again, so.
It's January 27th.
It is Martin Luther King Day.
Got you.
Oh, I need to put that.
You, well, you do have it as a, oh, you didn't put the, the holiday.
Yeah, I just, um, I, I'm guessing that February 18th is during school vacation, so I probably won't be around with that, assuming.
Well, I most probably won't be around either. If you need, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's two blowout already, so, like, tonight, we would've had a problem, obviously, but, yeah.
So the question is, and I looked at this to see how moving it to a, a subsequent week would work, but then you're, you're ending up with two weeks in a row.
Yeah, math, it should be okay, we have plenty of, you know, we should have.
We can also.
Plenty of numbers, so I have it for him.
What did you say, the twenty or twenty-seven?
It's Martin Luther King Day.
In my calendar, it's the twenty.
Really? Okay, well, I was, I was presuming, but, no, I think you're right, because MLK Day is.
Well, they probably have the twenty-seventh.
Well, let me see, let me see what we have.
Oh, they might have pushed theirs a week, yeah.
They chose, have a great, good day.
Right, but they wouldn't, I. I think Chris's point is that we would be meeting 21st, let's just, you know.
Just seven days from.
Yeah, that wouldn't make sense.
It'd be too close to the, make the far.
Yeah, you're right.
Oh, for meeting the thirteenth.
So why was it the twenty-seventh? Let's see.
I think she's saying.
Right, I think that, right, you know what, it was, it, but, so why?
Well, let's, we'll just keep it at the.
Well, we don't need to, if, we can check that one to see if maybe that was an error. Because Martin Luther, is it a?
It's not a.
Well, why don't we check it, why don't we send that out to the other people? Why don't we just wait until everyone gets a look at it, and then we'll just do it at the next meeting?
I'll, I'll go check this, like, right, I can put their dates here, too.
No pressure, the conservation commission has been told they can't schedule their meetings until the planning board agenda is set.
So let's call the planning department.
So, is it okay if we wait on this, so that we figure out the, the holiday and the, you know, that too?
Yeah, but I mean, I, but I think, first of all, it's a, it's a, you know, they're testing, so.
Yeah, okay.
We can't, we're not gonna be able to cherry pick the schedule.
Oh, I know.
Um, 'cause we can't, we can't, Boris Lekhanov, they're on Mondays, pick.
And we can change.
And I'd rather do a Tuesday here, than, we can't even, it's just too small.
Oh, so you put her in this room?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Well, that's what, we're always said, yeah.
So this is all in this room?
Yeah, and, and we, we can't hold meetings up there, it's just, we, we usually get it right.
This is approved, all right, I'm watching to approve this schedule.
Second, all those in favor?
With, with the caveat that we may, if there's, about what was.
Yeah, if we can get that Monday back, that's fine, but I don't think there must be something.
Maybe the room, but maybe we can.
But it's coming, I'm picking up.
Yes, all right.
Yeah, so I said that.
Okay, if it's okay with the chair, I'll make one motion.
Hold on, in ten, ten minutes, we, we.
The conservation commission never.
We scheduled ZBAs, cheers. Yeah.
Why, who, who was it?
It doesn't.
Or shouldn't that?
What's that?
Who goes first?
Did you second?
Peter.
All right, all in favor? Boom, thank you, Easton, thank you, Ecap. All right, guys, we just have to sign.